Meeting to order. The order June the 25th. On the moment of silence, I would like for us to remember the families of the Roers and also the Kings, deputies from Windon County, and keep them in your talks and prayers. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mayor's out on vacation this week, so I'm sitting in. I'll do my best to keep things moving along and not fumble it up too bad. Do our motion to approve the minutes from the June 11 meeting?
I make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
We moved and seconded it. Any discussion or comments, questions?
Let me just note that you still have a vote. I have two councilmembers, most of the council party members. Strider?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Addis?
Yes. Our motion to approve the statement of bills and $175,710.90.
I make a motion to approve the statement of bills in the amount of $175,710.90.
Your question, second question, comments? Amen.
Strider?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Addis?
Yes. All right. Next is request or comments from the public. You can state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Three minutes, very well.
My name's Mike Wheeler. I live at 1145 South 105th Street here in Edwardsville up in Castle Park. My wife and I have lived here for 23 years. I wanted to drop by. It's my first council meeting, believe it or not, in 23 years, but back in January, the Nazarene Church asked me to plant a church out here in my hometown, and we accepted. And things are moving along nicely. And our second preview service will be at the community center on July 15. We've had a really good response, and it looks like we're going to bump up our timeframe and actually start offering weekly services at that point. So my goal tonight, I just wanted to come introduce myself, say hi, and hopefully we can become a vibrant part of the community. All the churches in Edwardsville are north of 32, and most of the population in Edwardsville is south of 32. And so we want to be a part of making this one city under God. So I'm excited to be working with the community, and hopefully we can have great long-term relationships. So the church is called Christ Agape Collective, and we're a church of the Nazarene.
What time is the service?
11 o'clock. And you can look us up on the web at C-A-C-N-A-Z.net, cacnaz.net. And it's got all of our information, statements of faith, et cetera.
I could just add that Mr. Wheeler has also been serving with our Edwardsville Day Committee, Auto Fest Committee, excuse me, I don't get the right name. I've been to a mall. I believe was going to be playing some music at his other account during that, and they then had an opportunity to stop by briefly this weekend. They've been doing on Saturdays, I guess it's a permit than every Saturday.
Every Saturday morning at about 11:30, we bring a bus, and we do a free VDS on wheels for the kids in Edwardsville, and we serve them a free sack lunch afterwards for them and their families. And we've been averaging about 10 to 20 kids a week, plus their families, so it's been just a great way to connect, especially with the families over at the trailer park. And we chose the community center for all these events because of its central location. We felt like most of the people in Edwardsville could walk to church and walk to the activities. So it's been a great, great experience. So we'll be there every Saturday through November, whether it permit.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. We go to item four.
Well, I'm going to introduce this, and then we basically have two individuals that you know, both of them Scott Anderson and Tyler Ellsworth, that get into the details. As you know, we've been in discussions for some time about acquisition of land being 590 South 4th Street and 400 Beach Street. As you recall, we adopted a resolution earlier this year, 2018 National Act, in which the council basically authorized us moving forward with that purchase under certain conditions, asked Mr. Anderson on our behalf to negotiate that process, which he has completed. So tonight, we really have three actions. The first action, and Scott will address it, is the real estate contract or the contract to acquire. The next two are resolutions, and it really has to do with the funding for the project. So the first of those two resolutions recognizes the project being eligible for the use of bond funds, which really in this case is existing interest earnings that we've had on the various bonds that we've issued over time. We've accumulated interest earnings, but in order to spend those, we have to have an appropriate project. And the second piece of that basically takes our 2006 project, which is where most of the interest earnings started from, and amends that project to allow us to use those funds for this purpose. We also have funds that we reduce, we can on the developer fund, which as you know, those funds come from development when we issue the industrial revenue bonds. There is a generally a 1% fee charged for that, and that goes separately into the economic development fund. So those are the three actions. Just quickly on the financials, so the acquisition price is $710,000, which I think we had discussed that before. We are proposing to use quarter of $25,309 from the capital improvement fund, which is the amount of interest earned through the bank earn first this year, and the remaining $284,691 from the economic development fund. As you will hear, there's also a lease attached to this by current owner. He will be the tenant for approximately eight months, and those funds will revert back into the economic development fund is how we approach to address this. So I would ask Scott Anderson to come up, and he can go over the first part of this, and then Tyler can hit the two resolutions, and then I'm sure if there's questions as we go along or afterwards, we will collectively try to answer all those.
Council members, Scott Anderson, council to the city. I believe, Michael, they, everybody received the copy of the agreement.
They did. We can send the packet.
The agreement that you have before you tonight authorizes the city to enter into a purchase agreement for the approximately 4.4 acres north of here, which is the adjacent buildings and old restaurant next door to us. The purchase price set forth in the agreement is $710,000. We did have extensive negotiations with the owner of that property some time ago, and this is the price that was settled on, and I believe the price that we spoke about before. The agreement is fairly short form. There's not, there's not a lot, I mean, we're really buying the land. As far as due diligence with respect to the building, we are doing all the normal title due diligence, obtaining the title commitment, maintaining the title policy. We did, we did do a walkthrough with a contractor's representative of the building, but as you know, the plans are not to keep the building. So it was a pretty limited due diligence with respect to the status of the building. There is a provision in this document that says the seller will lease the property from the city. They agreed to entering to a lease with the city for at least and through March of 2019. And thereafter, it's on a month-to-month basis, meaning either the city or the owner, the seller can terminate that lease on 30 days' notice. Lease provides for $7,000 a month rent. This is a gross number, meaning the city will pay all taxes. However, the seller will pay all maintenance costs and expenses, and if something happens to the property during that time, the lease is just terminated. There's absolutely no obligation of the city to maintain the property or to pay any utility expenses. And if the property is destroyed, the lease is terminated. There's no obligation of the city to rebuild the property or repair it. Other than that, the lease, the agreement is pretty short and straightforward. I know Tyler was here to talk about how we can get the project paid for, but if you have any questions about the agreement itself, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Any more questions?
In the event that something happens with, before March of 2019?
During the time, the city is not under any obligation to maintain the property. So if something happens to the property during that time, where the, it's no longer usable by the seller, then the lease is just terminated, and the city will no longer apply rent. You'll get the property, and you're free to repair it, or do whatever you like with it.
So we're not insured?
No, they do have to maintain insurance on the property too during this time. So we will get proof of insurance if they have insurance. Now, you would, as a normal, even though they maintain insurance, you'd still have it as city property under the city's policy, but there should not, you know, should be a pretty minimal cost that would be associated with that.
We would put it on our schedule of facilities. We would probably look at how much we would want to actually insure for some street. So we may look at, would you insure for more than basically demolition value of the buildings? So I think, because if something happens to it and it's not usable, we don't have the intent to put people in from a lease property, we don't want to be in a lease business. So we would want to maybe cover our expenses associated, say it was a fire on a day or five tornado or something, to ensure that we could, you know, have the buildings removed. But that would probably be the maximum we would want there.
And then use of the parking lot?
Yeah, they're, that, they basically in their contract have use, certain use of the parking lot themselves, but we would control, unless Scott said that. I mean, they have a right to use the parking lot for their purposes in and around the building. I think it says reasonable parking, but other parking on the lot would fall under our control just because our current law, so I mustn't, I understand.
We agree to allow them to use just enough spaces to operate. So it's pretty general in this agreement, and the lease will be very specific. We'll probably, actually, we'll probably tell our mayor and mayor in the lease, take a picture of it from Google Earth and draw mine where they can park it. But I presume, and I presume that's something council can do, is allow them to use reasonable number of spaces in front of the business.
What they need, but just what they need. They practically forbidden us to use after the auto fest and all that. We'd have, you know, that parking issue, that's a very good point to break out of. The only building they will occupy is the old grocery store. They do have materials in existing restaurant buildings that we're removing will determine what, you know, a reasonable time after closing to do that. We don't have immediate use for that, but, but I think part of the question, Scott, comes that there's been parking for the, what we refer to as the high-rise over there, that sometimes there's not adequate parking for visitor or for people that are coming, caretakers and things like that, because the parking lot's pretty limited, and four or five places might get used for that. And in the past, basically, they haven't been willing to use that.
Right, that's correct.
And I don't think the same thing. I don't, I don't believe there's anything in here that would give them the right to regulate.
Well, that's what I want to make sure. My comfort level's okay with the, the parking, you know, they, it's a, like you said, Google Earth, you know, lay it out, here's your, here's your, here's your parking parameters, and what happens on the outside of that's up to us.
Yeah, I mean, once we close it, all the property is the city's property, so whatever we don't lease back, you'll be free to use or let citizens use as you wish.
And I also want to be fair that we're, I mean, we've got a $7,000 a month tenant, too. Who needs some parking spaces? So I want to make sure that we're, you know, we're both happy.
Well, I know right now the agreement says they get the dirt, their space plus the adjacent parking there. So I presume that, and that's what we planned on doing, was marking something out on Google Earth. But if anybody has any input as far as, I mean, I think, I need to make it pretty clear, I mean, just enough for them to use, or any comment on that, I'd be happy to take it.
They do block this off here. You know, they'll park trucks across there, so if you come in that piece there, you have to go on the mobile loan park road to come down to City Hall, because they'll have trailers parked across there and so forth that park you down, so you can't make that pass.
Is that the backside?
They block you off, yeah.
Okay.
And then you've got to get on the private highway over there to come around to go into the side, to the other side of City Hall. So that could be an issue, I think, if it's more crowded.
We can address that with a lease.
I know sometimes it's, I'm getting worried. It hasn't caused any specific issues. Public safety, you're saying?
There are issues.
Yeah, I understand. We can address the appropriate parking area if we need to.
Your questions, your comments?
Yeah, I would, I'd go ahead, unless you want to do this, but you may want to hear the rest of the presentation, and then we can take the three actions. We want the three second actions, which is based on something subsequent to this.
Is there a preference on what order we do those?
I would probably do it, the contract, and then the two resolutions are in order that they need to happen. Scott, stay around a few. I know Scott has an important place to be here. You did this last year, too, Scott, as I recall. Did we were here on that same evening, yes.
Good evening, council members. Tyler Ellsworth with the law firm in Futac Rock. As Mike outlined, Scott's been, and Scott explained, Scott's been working on sort of more exciting, interesting parts of this transaction, the real estate contract. I've been working with Mike as well on sort of the more technical, less sexy parts. But essentially, what we're trying to do is identify existing monies that the city has on hand and use those monies for the acquisition cost of the property. And so as he outlined, there are approximately $400,000, $425,000 of change in interest earnings relating from prior bond issues of the city going back to 2006, that through essentially a two-step process, we can repurpose so that they can be spent on the property acquisition. So as he laid out, there are two resolutions that we're requesting your consideration of this evening. The first resolution identifies sort of the land acquisition as a project and authorizes bond financing for that. The second resolution essentially modifies or adds to the 2006 bond proceedings and says that the acquisition is a project it can be used, the building monies can be used for. So it's a two-step process. Once we have these approvals, the next step is to run this through the Attorney General's office, just as you would bond issue, even though you aren't issuing any debt, because his office can approve the proceedings. And we should be able to do that in time to close on July 19th. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Does the 4/25 real night drain that amount? Is there a?
Uh, no, there's about five, about $583,000 is what's in that fund. We still have, effectively, we still have the LTC project that's open. There's some final cost that I have here tonight. And then technically, the Kansas Avenue project is not closed, even though everything's done and finished, but until the Federal Highway Administration does their final audit, we can't close that project. So it will leave some funds in there for those purposes, and then when that's finished, then, then we can do a couple of different things. Potentially, we could, you know, use, do this process for those funds, or we could use it and move it to the debt service fund and use those to pay, you know, pay down, basically, a payment in lieu of tax dollars effectively. So, but we kind of want to clean, we're really looking at how we can clean this up over the rest of this year, and this is really a first step.
And Tyler, you said the $7,000 rent thing that would go to the economic development fund?
It would, that's correct.
I would note that out of that $7,000 that I mentioned before, that part of that will build into the property taxes, because the portion where the building is located where there's lease activity, just as we have up here, that is subject to property tax, but you have a private use, so you can't, the city can't go buy buildings and then lease them back and not pay property tax. Now, the vacant parcel that basically addresses 400 Beach Street, we will ask for that to go into the tax exempt role, because it's vacant property and we use for public purpose, you know, just common property at this point, and we should be able to have that removed from the tax role in that. But as long as that building is occupied and rented, it will be subject to taxes, but it will offset those costs. And we knew that when we were negotiating the amount. The $2,000 a month is about the total taxes for all of the property.
And they were up to speed on the taxes?
Yes. They're, they're up to date, and they will have to pay taxes through the date of closing, correct, Scott?
Yeah, taxes are pro-rated to date of possession, so anything, you know, you'll have to pay, or the city has credit.
Do we have a final walkthrough before closing? Do you know if anyone, I was just wondering, because, and this might, this is probably a question geared more toward you, if we, and maybe we've already had the fire chief or anybody who walked through, so some of that is leased in case something should happen, just to make sure that, that everything's safe and if someone should get, you know, be on the property, that it's safe for people to be around.
You know, there's not, the agreement states that the inspection period's over, so we've had a rapid, you inspect the property, but we could certainly require another inspection before we take possession. You know, the property's subject to all the normal lease powers of the city, including...
Well, they're subject to annual inspection under the business license, when you get their commercial property.
So we'd probably then be...
We've been in there every year, annually, so.
And they'll still be subject to that as long as they're on the lot.
I think, I mean, if you guys are comfortable with that, that's my question.
It's a complex value, it's firmly, it could be quite, I mean, most of the public improvements that are there, which there's not many, definitely have a value to us, and once, you know, they have pretty limited access, public access in the office. You know, mainly they have public access, it's in the office area, and the rest of it, they generally take people in to show them a book or something like that.
Okay.
Not like, but public can easily enter in and out of the building.
Any questions for Tyler?
So your, your first motion would be basically to authorize me to execute a contract with the KKLJBLLC, which is a component of the property. And then the second and the third actions would be the Resolution 2018 National Act of 2012. And I would take each one as a separate motion and vote. I think it's clear about the way you're phrasing this.
May I hear a motion to approve the real estate contract?
Make a motion to authorize city manager to execute a contract with KKLJBLC for the acquisition, land and buildings located at 400 South, or 400 Beach Street and 590 South 4th.
Any further comments, questions? Zach, you call it what you want.
Strider?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Addis?
Yes. All right. You're hearing Resolution 2018. Can you give us a quick sentence review?
Yeah, 2018-11 is basically authorizing that this is a project that is eligible for the use of general obligation finance. But again, we're not issuing any of these bonds, but we still have to identify it as an eligible project.
Our motion to approve Resolution 2018-11.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-11.
Second.
Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, Zach, please call it.
Strider?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Addis?
Yes. And could you summarize the 2018-12?
2018-12 basically authorizes the project to be financed with the proceeds of bonds, which is the quarter of $25,309, which is interest earnings from basically the start of the 2006 bond period, which was roughly June of 2006, we made the first, current year.
Your motion to approve Resolution 2018?
Second.
I didn't hear a motion.
Well, I thought you just went. You could.
No, I'll, I'll hear a motion. Oh, wait, I didn't make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2018-12. Second.
It's in time. Any other questions? All right. Zach, call it please.
Strider?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Addis?
Yes.
I would just add one thing. I don't know if we need to take a vote, but if you would like to, so, I mean, we have authorized the purchase price, we've authorized the use of the bond proceeds. I think we made it very clear that it's our intention to do the rest of it, what we pay for PD fund. If you want to just make a motion to approve that, the remainder will come from the, you know, with all the other policies. I didn't think about that at the time.
Should that have been tied into my first motion then?
Yeah, I mean, the first motion, you're, you're approving that acquisition price, so I, I don't know that it's necessary. I just want to make it clear that that is the exempt. If you do that, we need to take part of the motion, that's great, if not.
So motion just to approving the use of $284,691 from the Economic Development Fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, tell me if this motion sounds, if you're right. So we make a motion to approve the amount of $284,691 out of the Economic Development Fund to pay the remaining balance of land acquisition at 400 Beach Street and 590 South 4th.
I agree with that, yes. Yes, sir.
Before you vote on that, keep in mind there could be proations. It could be, I don't want to...
Tie it to their amount?
I don't want to tie you right to a dollar amount, that can put you in a position of, finding the rest. You might say, I think approximately $290,000 is probably the rate.
Subject to, what is proation or?
Subject to closing costs.
Subject to closing costs. I didn't want to close the motion, so I would amend that to the end.
So we have a motion.
If you like it, I'll back it up.
Second. Any other questions? Is it perfectly clear? Somebody? Zach, please call it.
Strider?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
Khar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Addis?
Yes. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to buy you new rooms for you. I'm going to explain to that.
Scott, tell your wife thanks for her patience.
What looks in her face? She had a nice weekend.
She did?
Yes.
I'll see you around.
It is his wife's birthday. And we did this last year. He had an item, I think it was IRB item, also on his wife's birthday, so she, she hasn't called me yet to, you know, give me her favor.
Okay, Michael, that number five is yours.
Well, as you know, at the last council meeting, I brought before you some data and information regarding our pay, pay plan and pay system. And I think at that time, to summarize, as you noticed, that generally speaking, we have a, we have a graded step system that ranges from five to seven steps, grades A through Z, basically, which is a plan we put in a number of years ago. It's been a good plan, it's served us well. Every year since we've adopted it, the council has approved the funding for the steps, but we have not done cola adjustments to that program except for one other time. When we... When we met about this time last year talking about the budget, we talked about the possibility, both steps and, uh, steps as well as a COLA adjustment. But like in all budget years, we're always looking to see how, how the funds will work out. And I said at that time, we're probably looking at the mid-year to see where we were at and how we were doing. Uh, and then again, as we looked at actually our pay, and as you all know, we've had probably a higher than normal turnover. And generally what we've heard is it's, it's a combination of dollars and workload. We have a lot of people that do multiple tasks. Uh, and so, you know, let you go to another place, uh, make more money. I don't want to say work less, but, but, but have a more set, uh, situation. So I, I told you I would come back, uh, soon, and so it's soon. And so my proposal tonight is that we would adjust in the current year, the existing pay plan by a 2% COLA to come effective July 1st. Uh, we will be discussing and looking at, as I said before, staffing and pay will be probably the dominant subject matter within the budget. Uh, so we'll have further discussion about the plan itself and other steps that we might want to take there. This adjustment would cost about $35,000 from the end of year. So for the remainder of the year, it's about $70,000 annual costs of roughly $35,000. That includes both the pay side and the associated impact with capers, KPM, social security, Medicare that, that applies out there. Uh, I did note in the memo that when we were at this point a year ago and we were adopting the budget, we expected our fund balance to be around $752,000. Uh, we actually ended the year at about $920,000, uh, which was both an increase over the prior year and a significant increase over what we escalated. So all that being said, I think we have both the financial resources to do this. And I think from a market standpoint, as we've seen, that this is a positive step. I'm not going to say that this is going to make us equal to the market, but it's a step in that process. And so my recommendation is to approve a 2% COLA effective July 1st of this year. Any questions?
Any other question?
Yes.
So, so we did this last year and they were both, they were brought to us at the same time.
Right.
Why this year is it brought to us at separate times?
Well, I think when we came last year, what we would have liked to have done is done both the COLA and the step agreement.
Last year.
Last year in the budget process, but we were expecting our fund balance to be going down, not up. And so we could have either done the COLA adjustment or the step adjustment. And I think that in summary, you know, the feeling was do the step adjustment. The downside of the step adjustment is certainly people that are at the top of the range. And as I indicated to you, we have, are on average, most of our people are at step four or above. So if they're, if they're on the five-step portion, which, you know, if I take positions, you're talking about anything sergeants, fire drivers, uh, you know, any department heads, any of your, your middle folks in there generally on the five-step plan. Uh, but so everybody's either near the top or will reach, you know, be reaching that top steps in a pretty short period of time. Preferably we would do it all at one time. But again, I think overall we decided to do the step over the COLA. I will tell you that the time we did that, out of our 48 positions, we had around 10 to 12 of those that were, were going to hit the top of the pay plan. Now, what's, what's happened with some, with people leaving, to some respects, we've had people that promote. And so they've moved up because of promotion. And when they move up promotion, they generally are going to go back towards the bottom to the middle of steps. And you're not going to go from step five of this grade and go to step five of the next grade. And the pay plan is designed that between grades, it's 5%, between steps, it's 3%. So generally that movement may be one or two grades to the next position. So you create a gap in there to make that. So you can start, but they have still growth, that's what you...
So that's probably not part of the budget. You're saying this is not part of the budget?
This was not part of the budget. It was not part of the approved budget when we adopted the budget. Again, when we approved the budget, we were working off of any number of things that we know were, I mean, one, we were assuming a different tax rate and different values. But we were also assuming when we're going to end 2017 at the $752 number. And our audited number unencumbered is this $900, roughly $21,000. So we have about $168,000 more than we expected to start the year with.
Does that answer questions?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion for the city manager to amend a 2% cost of living adjustment effective July 1st, 2018.
Second.
Remove the second, any comments? Zach, you should rule.
Charlie?
Yes.
Stikes?
Yes.
KR?
Yes.
Malot?
Yes.
Addis?
Yes.
I would like to thank on behalf of all of our employees, uh, this action. Again, I, I know we're going to still have more discussion. I know we have a number of people in the room here from, from the fire department and the police department and other people represented. And I would just say, it really is, it takes everybody, right? So this isn't about trying to single out one thing. It's, it's across the board. All the people do a great job for us and are great at supporting this one. Thank you.
As a council member, I'd like to thank you all for the service that you have given. You're definitely an asset.
Well, then we get to the, oh, go ahead.
No, I think all of us are appreciating our efforts and agreeing. You're the face of the city, we really appreciate it. Okay, Zach.
Well, let me just start off by saying, thank you gentlemen, uh, that tonight we're into the next step of our annual budget. I, again, it is our intentions this year not necessarily to focus a lot of time on the, what we already do, uh, but to focus on, uh, again, I think people pay and headline, which may or may not be part of the operating budget, but, but again, focus on those big things. Unlike the private sector, uh, generally governments focus from the revenue side and then, and then trying to figure out how not, you know, how, how to get everything done. Uh, you know, the private side somewhat, you can say, what's it cost us to build something? And we want to make a, you know, 12% return and, and you can set pricing. We, we kind of operate from the opposite side. So obviously revenue is a critical component of what we look to do. A little bit what we've done different this year, and Zach's going to go over it, is, uh, we're trying to move forward to look at things farther out. So it's not only looking at the, you know, where we're at right now and where we're going to be next year, but try to start to predict farther out. And again, as part of the long-range planning, that was one of the things, you know, several council members had said, and it's, it's, how do we get to where we're doing, you know, almost multi-year budgeting? We have to wait until we get there, but this year, we're going to try to show you both on the revenue and expenditure side, we know we'll adopt an annual budget. At least what we're starting to see or think, the progress will be there. And we hope that way we can be even better budgeters as we, as we move forward in the process. So with that, Zach has done work in the figures, we're on the revenue sides. Uh, Michelle helps us greatly, uh, in, in that. She's kind of the person that sees the money go in and out more than anybody. And then after that, then all the department heads will have to get, get to work and we're going to do real hard work after that. So Zach?
Yeah, with that, we'll dive right into it. So like Mike said, we're going to focus a lot on revenue tonight. And it'll be kind of two parts of it. One, to project where we're clearly, we think we're going to end up at the end of this year. And then the look into 2019 and a couple of years beyond that. So the critical success factors the council identifies, communication, community growth and development, identifying opportunities, community leadership, ownership and engagement, and long-term planning. Tonight, we're going to focus mostly on that funding aspect and then a little bit of the long-term planning so we can look out in the future. So to start off, we're going to go over property taxes. So the county provides an estimated assessed value to the cities uh, in the summer during the budget planning process. And that's an estimate that we use to help calculate, you know, where one of our major sources of revenue is going to end up for the year. Then in the fall, they gave us the final assessed valuation. Now, last year what happened in the summer, they gave us an estimated assessed valuation of about $55.5 million. Uh, in the fall, they amended that and gave us the final assessed valuation of $57 million. So that's about a 2%, 2.6% increase, or about a million and a half dollars above what we thought we'd be working with. The council last year made the decision to keep the mill levy steady at 47.367 mils and then 36.244 specifically for the general fund. Because assessed valuation went up to the degree that it did, it artificially lowered our mill levy to 46.155 overall and 35.316 for the general fund. Now, you know, typically we wanted, you know, lowering the mill levy is, you know, something that a lot of communities worked towards. But in the way that this unfolded last year, essentially what it did is took away $51,305 approximately that we didn't know that we had to work with. So when we get the assessed, uh, estimated assessed valuation in the summer, we think we have a certain amount of money that, that, that we have to work with in order to craft the budget. Last year, wasn't until after the budget was adopted that we, that it was determined that there was, you know, a little bit more than $50,000 in there that we didn't really have to say and had to plan it, which probably would have affected some of the staff recommendations that we came to you last summer. So that's something that we need to be wary on as we're looking at property taxes. Assessed valuations, this kind of shows the history of assessed valuation going back to, to 2012. What we've been seeing since 2015 is about a 7.5% to 10% increase year-to-year in assessed valuations. Uh, currently from 2018 to what we're seeing for 2019, a little over later, that's showing about an 8.8% assessed valuation increase. Pretty aggressive increases in, in that number.
Part of that, just by which stat, uh, part of that has been that as our projects with IRBs come off. So remember, they're not calculated into that number. They, they, they appraise them, but they're not counted at all into that. So when they come off the IRB, they, they, they're going to show up completely on that tax roll. But at the same time, the IRB revenue tends, tends to offset. Now, we've been adding more IRBs as we go along. So you haven't seen a great reduction on the IRB side, at least not equal to what had increased on the property tax side. That is one driver, and not the only.
Right. And this just gives you some more history on how the council in the past has been pretty consistent with the adopted mill levy, keeping it around that 47.3 or 47.4%. And then around here shows where, due to the assessed valuations being increased at the rate that they were last year, how that affected what the final mill levy ended up being that we were working with 2018.
So is our 2019 mill levy 46.15? Is that what we're...
So we'll get into more discussion on what, what we want to set the mill levy at as we continue budget discussions. Uh, right now, the assessed, the estimated assessed valuations for the city...
62 million.
Yeah, it's a little bit north of 62 million. So an 8, an 8.8% increase. Now, how we want to structure the mill levy around that, and we're going to continue to have discussions throughout the summer about that. But this is, and a lot of the assumptions that you're going to see tonight assume that we hold that mill levy steady. And what I, by steady, I mean that 46.155 number.
That's generally what we'll, most traditionally, we'll start our discussions with the assumption that the levy stays level. Again, I don't think we expect a 1.2 mill decline. Uh, but quite honestly, I didn't expect we would see our values decrease as much as it has at this current year. The skeptic in me still says, uh, you know, is that a real number? I mean, that, just to be quite honest, over the, the years, uh, that's always been, there have been some questions out there. I will say that this last couple of years, we've really had a, not that we have a bad relationship, but I think there's been a lot more communications, especially the appraisers offers over the last couple of years that have been very positive. Understanding some of their processes. Bottom line, as we go into the budget, I would expect that we'll start at this level. I know nobody ever wants to see a little increase. I, I would say that even, we may come back and say, okay, what if, what if it was a half a mill higher or a half a mill lower for looking at options? It's just what I did expect we'll do, probably in that, that range.
Any other questions about the mill levy or assessed valuations at this point?
Unless y'all tell us differently.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I want to tell you all the time, lower the mill levy. I mean, that's what affects, you know...
Right.
Taxpayers.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm in favor of dropping it all the time. And it, and it's, it's a, um, it's looked at by development. I mean, it's a, it's a contributing factor to drawing...
It's a piece of the boat.
Right, so...
Uh, so moving on to city sales tax. So what we've been trying to do is get a sense on what, you know, we stretch out the last couple of years to see the passive prologue as far as what we want, or how we're thinking about revenues. How does, how we're performing in 2018 stack up to how we've performed uh, in the recent past and then even going back to 2012? So the city sales tax collections to date are about $204,000. And that's a little bit more than 20% higher where they're usually at. Last year, Mike gave some context of some of the audited year-end figures in revenue that, that, you know, kind of explained some of the increases that we've been seeing. Uh, but we're, even with 2017 being particularly strong, you see an 8% increase over 2016. We're performing at this rate about 20% better than we have been as far as the city sales tax is concerned. Um, so we got a pretty strong first quarter and then we're starting to see it level out. And we actually got some information today from the state regarding sales and use taxes that shows us, again, outperforming what this, this normal trend line shows. It's not incorporated into this. Uh, we're still going to be, you know, hold it at, at, we're performing 20% above normal right now. I think it's safe to say that if we end up the year in about a 5% increase, uh, if you look at all the years and kind of flat them out, that seems to be the trend that we're seeing. County sales taxes, county sales taxes, other than 2017, we saw that decrease. 2017 is as orange line right here. They started out the year pretty low, had a big spike in April, but didn't make up for that bad performance in their first quarter and then evened out and kind of went along with the rest of the trend, um, for the rest of the year. We are a little bit higher on the county sales tax collection toward the city at this point, about 5%. But what we're estimating is that we're going to continue to see this trend follow through. It's been consistent for at least the last three years. What we're anticipating is a 2% increase in county sales tax collection, bringing us to $667,000 at 527. For our city and county use taxes, for focusing on the city side of it real quick. So we are again, uh, about 25% at this point in the year higher than what we normally perform for the city use tax. It, it, it's a little more erratic. That's why I didn't show the graphs for this one, because they are a little jumpy. But at least as far, going back as far as 2014, we're seeing pretty consistent increases in the use taxes as far as the city is concerned. And so, you know, based on kind of the trends on where we're at and what this number indicates and how the rest of the year performs, we're anticipating the 10% increase from 2017 for the city use tax collection, putting us at a little bit over $200,000. Uh, for county use tax, they had a pretty... That wrote... The point is... Of what. [coughs] At any. 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 Of what. [coughs] At any.[668.54]
For getting cash that brings our any cash balance. It's right around that 2022 mark and we keep on the same trends, but you know every assumption rolling the way that we're anticipating it rolling where it starts to get a little dicey. I mean obviously by coming into 2022, I think these numbers are going to be some variation in these just based on the standard variable you receive year to year, but yeah, that kind of gives us a snapshot of cash balance projections and that amount of time.
And it doesn't take into account any new growth.
Exactly, yeah. It's like Mike said, this is essentially the sandbox that we've been planning in up to this point. We're anticipating, you know, growth hasn't been demonstrated to this point and there are certain factors out there that say they could increase at a higher rate than what it has in the past. So I'll end on this slide because that's kind of a revenue with our main for us tonight and that shows up for the rest of the year. So as we move forward, probably the next area that we're going to be focusing on is obviously expenditures. As Mike said, we're going to be focusing more on how that, as far as operationally goes, you know, you probably won't hear too much discussion about some of the nitty gritty stuff unless you're ready to provide more info on that. It's a big ticket item, staffing, capital, personnel that we're going to be focusing on for the next couple budget workshops. So that's, in a nutshell, revenue seems to be performing pretty well as far as 2018 goes and I'm not really seeing any indicators showing that 2019 is going to be much different. So you got any questions? I will answer that.
Questions, please.
I would just say on the cap balance, so obviously when you show me the slide with the 510, he almost got fired right there, but I understand, you know, the farther you get out, but roughly, I was just running the numbers, you know, if we want to stay at 15 to 18% range, which is our goal, we've probably been generally operating in the 12 to 15% range, which is still a solid fund balance. You know, you need to be in that, you know, those numbers for 19, 20, 21 are pretty fair, right? I mean, you're, right around that million dollar mark is in that 15, 18%. So 9, I think 980, if I took the last year, the 2022, you want to be between about 980 and just a little under 1.2 million. That would be an ideal cash balance place.
And again, that makes the assumption that we continue to increase expenditure to 5.6%, which.
The majority of our expenses are personnel and capital.
Yeah.
Personal.
Big tickets.
Right.
And again, I think that's why some of the things we've done are valued, the special sales tax fund, right? And I know it seems like we just did it, but we're about four or five years into that. So, you know, we're going to need to re, be talking about that before 2022 and, you know, how do we reassess that? Or, you know, do we look at an additional portion of sales packs or things of that nature? You know, I think tonight improved the value of why we took the Economic Development Fund and split it out so we can stay focused on the economic development. It should have, you know, it should have never been in the general fund. I would say Mr. Ed, probably the only one that was here from that early day, but, you know, I mean, if we should put it into the general fund, let's then make your numbers look good, but, I mean, it's not what its purpose is for. But, I mean, I think what we used to, of course, mine's exactly what our purpose is for, is building the economic vitality of your community. And so I think those, I think we have to, you know, we're going to have to start looking at the debt stuff. So if you look at our, if you put our debt up against this 2022, right, our debt service goes way down, but we also know that we'd have to start, you know, issuing some additional debt for infrastructure needs and things like that. We're going to continue supporting growth. So this is a piece that I want to put, you know, Zach, great job on this piece, we'll keep working on it. You know, my bottom line goal is always, how does it ultimately affect that cap balance basis? Because at least at the moment, we will never be at negative $277,000. I won't be here if we're doing that.
Zach, thank you for making it understandable.
I'm glad you understand. I feel like sometimes I, looking along, that's maybe the problem. So if you have additional questions coming out of it, or, you know, we're going to put this out on the website so people can find it and follow along. So if they've got questions, let me know, reach out to us and we can help put as much context as we can. But especially with the expenditure number, we're going to be nailing that down more as we go on through the summer. So this is high level, we don't have a lot of assumptions, but it's based on the data we have.
Thank you, Zach. Brings us to our advisory reports.
Well, I just have a couple of items I want to touch on. Just a reminder, July 4th is coming up next week, I guess. It's on Wednesday, so we will be closed on Wednesday, July 4th. And I'm sure the fire chief will probably have other discussions about July 4th, the fireworks. I would note, if you haven't had a chance, we've had a temporary person working here at City Hall, Ally Baccus, and she has been doing a great job for us. So she is actually a college student at the University of Arkansas in nursing programs or focus of, she hopes to go back to Arkansas, she's from Arkansas, St. Louis, when she finishes her nursing degree. But she's been, she's really knocked it out of the park. Not too often you can hire, you know, a 19-year-old and just, I mean, relatively, let's take it over for her. So she's doing a great job up front and helping to keep things up. On the hiring front, from our side, I think we have good candidates for both of our positions that we will be making offers to, I expect, in the next week or two, for the, kind of the revised, what used to be Jessica's job, which was executive assistant, and we've kind of remodeled that to be managers of our permits and inspections and all that. Because quite honestly, that's where she spent most of her time, working with A and working with contractors and working with IDTS and early managing and keeping all the permitting and the billing and the collection pieces going and then the replacement front of the customer service part. So hopefully we'll get those people onboard here very soon and maybe from there, I'm sure the chiefs have anything on their hiring side so we can, they can discuss that. I think at the moment, we're fully staffed on those two sides as far as what's authorized, unless something's changed that I'm not aware of, which would be possible. Yes.
What about the attorney position?
The attorney, I expect that the mayor will be making an appointment at the next meeting. I was hoping he was going to make one tonight, but I, to be quite honest with you, I was thought, I forgot or didn't recall until later in the week, late last week, that he was going to be on some of our occasions. He had plenty of them, he forgot. So in my discussions with him, I expect he will make a decision at our next meeting or personally be present. That would be my expectation. I'll be happy to have him.
Chief.
There have been a couple items. Thankfully, I called on Scott or Tyler or others and they've been gracious to, it's not necessarily their forte, but they've been gracious to help answer questions.
Now, I think.
Zach.
We continue, today we wrapped up our promotional process that we've held open for quite some time. We have a couple of mask control officer positions that are open. They perform all our work, quasi supervisors, but they do all our field training. And so we need some time, more experienced in time to make a bit of social life first. We'll have a couple of new mask control officers who will start their field training program. They'll have to be certified first and then they'll be involved in our new recruit training and some refresher training. So we're excited about that. We have five candidates that are just really quality people and so young, but eager and ready to learn. We use that position as a development position because it requires that, if you're going to be an instructor, you really have to know the system inside and out, and you have to be able to communicate that. And then you have to observe and make sure that the benchmarks are met and that you have to evaluate people. So that sounds like a full supervisor, such as sergeants. All of our sergeant positions come out of those mask control office positions. So that's how it's worked for almost 10 years now. So we've got some quality people. I got to make a pretty tough decision in the next couple of days and have them ready for scheduling on July 1st. We're, we don't even, please, we don't normally staff up for the Fourth of July. We just don't have too many things, but we help the fire department as much as we can with any complaints and that sort of thing. We always have a kind of a disaster here at the city hall. We try to keep people away and they just leave a mess. I know the owner has complained about that and probably put up a sign, presume again, and that sort of thing. So, but we're running 12-hour shifts anyway. We have, trying to keep three people out at all times and we did that for some time now. We do have one position that we're interviewing for, for hiring, and that has been a long time. We only have a couple of candidates that were, that we've called back to interview this week and hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll have somebody onboarding and getting ready for their field training as well. So we hope to have that. We have no certified candidates at this point, so these are, these will be fresh training. So a lot of activity. We had 20 cases over the weekend and we're nine weeks ahead. So we're really busy and again, as I said, we're running 12-hour shifts to keep three people out at all times. We need our supervisor, we have to have, we can't have one policeman taking somebody to jail and leaving one in town. We just not want to do that. But that comes and Councilman Adams has heard we say this over the years, you get vigilant fatigue, you work too much. We try to leave the days off alone. So we're extending shifts during their regular scheduled time, but we're trying to secure their days off. What happens on a, say, a Thursday that you have? Well, that's when we have court. So you got to come back for a couple hours and things like that. We're really trying to control that and just trying to keep everybody out there, keep them safe. So again, I think from my staff, the police department, appreciate the consideration for the 2% COLA increase and I appreciate any consideration that you can give them for any future. So we can be really competitive. We have great people. We love to retain them and we love to be able to recruit as well. We have the last few years, just really tapered off these last couple of years. And I think that's kind of showing us the trend that we just need to be just a little bit more competitive. So I appreciate any consideration.
Thank you.
And extra, extra here all about it, two police cars are now missing from the parking lot because we sold them. 20, 26, what, 26,000?
That's rounded up.
Just rounded up. I'm rounding up to 26,000. You know, I'm a good car salesman. That's, so if you remember the days when we sold about three cars for 700 bucks, we're averaging anywhere from that to about, well, about 14,000 in that range. So the lead, the lead of police department in south, southeast Kansas, I think Oklahoma, Missouri area down there, that's their, twice they bought partials. So it takes a little while, council has to approve and things like that. So you might have saw them sitting there for a few weeks, but we got them sold and they're off and running. So thank you.
Chief.
Last county only have two fireworks stands for next week, so sales will start this weekend. Gas mean inspection, day one of opening, it is part of the permit process. We can re-inspect at any given time with any type of non-accident going in, so we will do pop inspections. I am working the fourth as well, so we will be doing pop inspections all the way through till the fourth, up until time that everybody decides they're going to have a little war down down here. So the big thing is, we're going to monitor the luminaires, the little Chinese torches burning tar that everybody decides the light, send off there illegal in bad Kansas, they bring them over from Missouri. So we try to set there, monitor that and catch those before they come down somebody's crew tops. Apologize I've got to run those because the cop was filming that. Again, thank the council for consideration, 42% pay raise. I know I had a big contribution through, sending you, we all really through, environment network. Drew and we, very cool, the top process of every part of the last council meeting we saw on YouTube. Again, we are down, have bitten once this year. Part of that problem was identified as a mistake that occurred through nursing homes and we did lose some of our frequent flyers. We have gone to the point and also where we have reduced our false alarm responses by almost 65% due to the inaction of US Basic React. So now what we see is besides more false alarms that are truly triggered of being a VDU water surge problem, which is the system that does its job, let's say, emergency force works some water. The smoke and heat theft is a problem that we work with. This isn't, a lot of facilities have maintained and the product standards of the normal monthly maintenance of where they're getting cleaned out. So those numbers of calls have gradually dropped. So we're seeing this light drop in our alarm. It's not a huge effect to where we were four or five years ago, where we were 500 calls, we're still on track, almost 1100 calls this year. Other than that, that's all I support this guy.
Chief.
And it's not even close to go with it.
Jimmy?
Yes, I'd like to give you some updates on our current projects that we have. We have the wooden flow meter project that's been going on down at H E 2435. We're putting a flow meter on the big cemetery, so of course, that project's kind of at a halt at this point due to the production of our actual flow meter that we expect after the project. We wanted to be consistent with the one that we just been at the lift station up north. So we have the same equipment that our guys are working on that. So that's kind of at a halt until probably the beginning of August and that project will continue. I'm not certain if anyone's been down Riverfront Park lately, but that project's, the trail project's moving right along. They've cleared the roads, we have put in our culverts, they've done the base prep and hopefully within the next few weeks, they can get the 83 down and they can be baited. So looking forward to getting that finished in the near future. I think lots of citizens will hopefully take advantage of that. There'll be an actual trail back there through the woods. On a positive note, like Mike indicated, they have some good candidates for their open positions and our ways for the formal position, we have an excellent candidate and hopefully going to be moving forward with offering that personal position in the near future. So looking forward to getting that, a couple of works pushing on Friday. And again, I'd also say thank you for the possible adjustments from the public work department. Our guys and girls do, you know, a lot of work in the neighborhood part too and we appreciate that concern as well, the little adjustment.
I wish I had an opportunity to walk the trail that the park has cleared out. It's going to be really nice out there this weekend. The footsall function and so take the opportunity to walk the whole trail. It's really going to be nice. I think it's really, it's just, it's nice to go through those trees and come back around. I think it's going to be a really a nice addition to that trail.
How did the footsall?
You know, it wasn't as, I was out there Saturday morning too. I think they were anticipating more, more teams. From talking with the, the names like the guy who was here talking about the event, there was a separate footsall event that took away some of the teams that started the day before. They had six or seven teams out there. When I was out there, there was about 50 people at the park and I think it probably, you know, bounced around between 25 and 50 folks then that we were playing. But I mean, it was a nice day for it and we got some good pictures and good use for the court.
They, I went down there a little bit later and that's what I said, they had several teams pull up. They said they had the same problem at, I think, last weekend at one of their other courts too, that people were scheduled to be there and then they pulled it out, you know, right before the start. I'm assuming because there was other, you know, other activities where they signed up a team and then, if it's anything like indoor soccer, when I played that, you know, everybody's all gone home until it's time to go play. And I look and Carol is not there.
Well, I was going to ask those four things. I, I've seen just in event planning that sometimes when we don't charge a fee for anything, it's, or for some things, it's really easy for people to just blink out, which wasn't in our control. But I think sometimes that has something to do with it, that there's no investment. It's like they fall off easily. I was also going to ask about the soccer signups, but I'm guessing there probably isn't.
We got a couple of you saying that you're the people who are interested, will follow whatever the signups and false doctor report lies, but there were, a lot of the folks there already knew about it and already involved in the program.
knew about it and already bolted the program.
This is broken record again on the, on the budget preparation. You guys just really make it simple for me, you know, to figure out what to do. I have the 2%, 2% goal. I'd like to see them get more soon if we can ever figure out a way to, because they deserve it, I think. I will say that this is a plus in, in one of the exit interviews I did, it was on the fire side, that the individual, we were talking about things. I asked him about the benefit side. And actually what he said was the cost for him to insure his family was less than Edwardsville, but wasn't over the par. So that's a plus right now. When I'm saying it was significant, he said he really appreciated. He made a, made a comment that he truly appreciated our overall benefit package that the city provided. And he used that as definitely, it wasn't so significant that it was the, you know, night and day difference, but didn't mention that specifically that he appreciated. I mean, on that side, it's part of the overall compensation. So we do a good job there.
So, Ruth Garrett comments. I did want to say this. Last Friday was the funeral for the two sheriff's officers. And I've worked downtown and several of my workers that I work at the Brotherhood Building, there might've been 80 or hundreds outside. And when the procession came down State Avenue, oh, it was, it was moving. Never seen anything like that before in my life. But I'm so proud to see our four Edwardsville police cruisers come by too. We're all just standing there. Whoever was there, I don't know, I couldn't see in the car. That procession took over 45 minutes, if not an hour. That was just the police vehicles from all over the country. But not everybody I work with on that, you know, we go back inside and I suppose, yeah, we're going to go far. So very proud of our city, very proud of the cruisers coming through there. That, that was, that was very emotional. But we'll just, thank you.
We, admin staff stayed behind to manage the office and court security and everything else because we had court that very same day. So that seven of our guys could go and, I hate to say experience, but it was very emotional and they needed that. They came back emotional and needed that outlet. They said as much. And so it was, you know, I think it was, basically it's a tough job, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
So with the sad day and hopefully never forgotten.
I, you'd say you had the opportunity to, but I attended the funeral. I've attended two in the last couple of years. And it gets harder every time, I believe. And so I appreciate actually all the first responders and the jeopardy that you put yourself on a daily basis to, to keep us out of jeopardy. So thank you very much. And then those families have a tough, tough recovery up Road to O for a while. So a couple of questions. On, on the river, what is the rock work and everything they're doing? Just on the east or, yeah, the east side of the concrete?
That was, as I understand it, so Water One, so when they built the, the dam type system, weirs, the weirs, that it started causing that erosion over on that side. And that they, that they need, that they mediated that damage by putting that in. I think they're done now. They're dropped and they, they put cement up there and everything. But that was to help control that erosion. I don't know if it also helps redirect the water some downstream, but that might, I talked to somebody at Water One and that, they talked about that. That was their project. So there was a lot of rock that went through here, I'd say that. And a lot of it came down, you know, and they came through, whichever font, you know, came through 9th Street or, or 98th Street or it came and went down Woodin for access. I assume they were coming for some of the, the bits there and bomber springs, some of that, that rock probably did came from there. I can't imagine how much that cost or how many tons of rock, but it's a lot.
They did a lot of digging there for it.
I was amazed. They take those trucks and the backhoes and be out in that river up to the doors and, you know, the backhoe is like sticking out of the wire. I, I'm glad I wasn't doing it. I don't think I could have.
And question on the frisbee golf. Is that being used regularly?
I'm out there at the park periodically and, you know, more often than not, I'm seeing at least a couple of folks. I was sitting out at this nice play on it. We're getting a lot of good feedback online. And Mike's out there, he says, Mike Marvin's out there, says he sees a lot of folks using it. I mean, it's, because relatively low cost and, and people will use it. And we're getting more and more club into the Kansas City Flying Disc Association club that they got. It might be something to consider if the River Park Trail, kind of Riverfront Park Trail develops, that maybe it has some infrastructure out there. Yeah, I would say it's, it was a good investment.
When I was there Saturday, somebody pulled up as I started walking, just playing. We do have as part of the festival on that Friday night, we're doing a kind of a nighttime, I guess, evening time disc golf tournament. It's being sponsored by Athens Gas. And I believe what the first 50 attendees will get a free disc as part, as part of that program.
And when we, when we had the course designed by Dynamic Disc, they had, they had a kind of couple graphic designers to help us put together an Edwardsville disc golf, football logo. So it's the same thing that's on the kiosk map that's out there now. We're going to put that, that logo on a, on a neat, like glow-in-the-dark disc golf, disc. And yeah, first 50 folks will sign up and get a free one. And that actually Friday night kind of forward this art festival.
What are the dates of the festival?
21st and 22nd of September. We're, we should have, be announcing some headliners for the Saturday night concert here pretty soon. And crap, there's signups, keep coming along. And if you guys, if the council or anybody else has a lead on some staples or you want to sponsor some areas of it, then put in contact with us and we'll, we'll find some, some of them to participate. But coming together, it's going to be quick.
And we have, you know, from the mouse races, which is probably the most, one of the most popular things, which I think it's like a hundred dollars per race or something.
A hundred fifty per heat, yeah.
Yeah, per heat. So, you know, I mean, we wanted to have opportunities, whether it's a small, you know, small business, still wants to be part of it versus, you know, letters that might, you know, put in 2,500 or 3,000 or whatever. So we have opportunities across the line.
And you have that information in the office?
Yeah, and we can send it e-mailing.
Yeah, I'll send down, I'll send out kind of our sponsorship packet.
Yeah, why don't you do that to all of us? So if we know somebody we can forward it
No problem.
To any other business. Thanks for putting up with me tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.